After all, I'm not Dave Shoji. You don't have to all stand and rise as one. Mr. Attorney General?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to make an introduce, introduce your assistant, who has actually done all the heavy and hard work, and come up with us, Ann, please?
This is Ann Lopez, who's the Special Executive Assistant for the Department of the Attorney General.
Come on, stand in here, Ann, as well. Thank you.
Under Section 10, Article 3 of the State Constitution, I am calling both Houses of the Legislature to convene in a special session to begin on October 28th to address the issue of marriage equity. This decision is based on precisely what is involved in the bill, which is entitled "Relating to Marriage." It essentially, the purpose of the act is stated in the bill, is to recognize marriages between individuals of the same sex in the state of Hawaii and to address questions of equity, civilly and otherwise, that have arisen in the course of the discussion over the past 20-plus years, at least in Hawaii. The first instance of informed discussion, if you will, based on actual legislation or judicial decision-making came in 1993. So it's my conclusion, and I think the conclusion of everyone that I've been consulting with, is that virtually everything that can be said has been said. Virtually every angle, virtually every view, every variation on a view with regard to the issue of marriage and equitable treatment for those engaged in marriage has been aired, has been analyzed, has been discussed. And at the same time, I want to make certain that everybody feels that they've been respected, that their views have been respected, not necessarily agreed with, but that no one has been left out or marginalized in the process, even to this point. So taking into consideration some of the logistical necessities associated with an off-regular session, special session, the 28th is, I believe, a fairly agreed-upon consensus time for the Legislature to be able to meet and to pursue its work on this issue efficiently and productively. That has been the single most important criterion for me in trying to decide on a date to have the session take place. The reason for the session taking place prior to the opening of the regular session next year is that there are serious and deep, serious, deep, and wide-ranging consequences, particularly with regard to tax law, that have to be in effect by December 31st if they're to be taken full advantage of, presuming that the bill has enough votes for passage. So it was important to give everybody the opportunity to have their say with regard to the substance of the legislation. That's what Ann and David, as the Attorney General and a member of the really remarkable group of Deputy Attorney Generals that we have, by the way, I want to say that parenthetically. I don't think that the deputies get the recognition they deserve all the time. And in this particular instance, Ann and her colleagues, it's not a solo effort by Ann, have been extraordinarily judicious in their approach. They've taken into account lawsuits that are in existence right now emanating from the state of Hawaii. They've taken into account judicial decisions that have been made up to and including the recent Supreme Court decisions as to what those implications and consequences might be for those of us living in Hawaii. All those kinds of things have been taken into account, as well as the legislative context. So I'm very, very proud of that work. I feel that whatever one's position ultimately on the issue of marriage equity is, that we can truly say that here in Hawaii, everyone has had respectful attention paid to their views, that everything has been taken into consideration that could reasonably be expected from people who are operating on the basis of good faith and goodwill, and that October 28th will provide us an opportunity to efficiently and effectively bring this issue to a conclusion, and that we can then proceed to other business of the state, more particularly with the beginning of the next session, the next session of the Legislature next year, its supplemental year, again with the idea of being efficient and productive on behalf of the people of Hawaii. David, Ann, would you like to say a word or two at this juncture?
Thank you, Governor. The Department of the Attorney General, and I personally am very pleased that the Governor has gone forward and called a special session. We've crafted a bill in consultation with the Judiciary Chairs of both the Senate and the House. We've taken into account many different views, and I believe that we have a very good bill that should meet favor.
Ann?
She just tells me. In that context, then, I want to pay particular tribute and extend my gratitude to President Kim and Speaker Suki, to the respective Majority Leaders, Representative Psaki and Senator Galiteria, and most importantly, to Chairs of the Judiciary Committee in both the House and the Senate for their, not just for their leadership, but for their collaborative attitude, for the continuing dialogue that we've had. The way this has been handled in both the House and the Senate by the Judiciary Chairs reflects more than just credit, but actually reflects on the very basis of what makes us a free people in a democracy, which is that you have subject matter committees in the legislative context, the duty of which is to address issues of importance within those categories. In this instance, in this instance, the judiciary, it takes the lead role in bringing this issue to hopefully a successful legal conclusion. And both of them have been extraordinarily patient, always available, pay close attention to their members, and are looking out for the best interests of the legislative process, and I'm very, very grateful.
Attorney General, could you elaborate on how you crafted a bill?
Oh, excuse me, just one further thing, because it may help to answer some of the questions. Some of the questions will be asked here today, and of necessity, they're going to have to be either truncated slightly for purposes of television broadcasts, or perhaps a news column that doesn't necessarily reflect a broader opinion, an editorial opinion. So we will be publishing on our website, along with the bill and the announcement and so on, what we call "Frequently Asked Questions," which I'm sure, many of which I'm sure will come up in the course of our immediate discussion. But we're going to try and compile all the questions we've been receiving, and the observations as well, that come in, and we will publish that so that questions that the individual might have in the general public will have a reference point and hopefully a succinct and informative answer available to them. So on the website, it'll come under "Frequently Asked Questions," FAQ. Thank you.
Attorney General, I just wanted you to elaborate on, you crafted a bill that would test legal?
Well, the important point here is that a team of lawyers from my department, working in conjunction with Judiciary Chairs, Chair Clayton Heenan, Chair Carl Rhodes, worked together to get a bill that would, we think, capture the essential elements of having, allowing marriage equity, while also having a religious exemption that would be respectful of differing religious views, and at the same time, take into account our overriding values in Hawaii to avoid discrimination in public accommodations. So all of that, those were taken into account. We heard from many different people. We worked long and hard on this. The team of lawyers worked long and hard. They took many provisions from the Civil Union's bill and looked at other bills, other legislation in other states, and had long-ranging discussions with people. That bill, as I understand it, will be posted on the Governor's website. Previously, a slightly different version was circulated to the legislators in the caucuses, but that will be posted as long as, along with, a copy of the proclamation, which the Governor has signed today announcing the special session. Yeah, I wanted to say in that regard that, again, I'm very, very grateful to members of the public, various factions, that were out there with respect to this issue, because everybody concentrated on the language of the bill. The religious exemption one is, I want to cite for singular praise, if you will. It's quite clear that for some people, it doesn't matter what the language of the bill will be, or what context is established, if they're opposed to the proposition involved, then they won't be voting for it. We understand that. But even those most opposed to the proposition that's before us, assumed goodwill on our part, and good faith on our part, and exercised it in turn themselves. That's why I think the language carve-out here, if you will, or the language, the exemption with respect to religious belief, the First Amendment right not to have the state impose religion on an individual or a group, I think is met with this, because we listened, and listened very, very closely to the suggestions of those, understanding that their view may not be the one that prevails with regard to the bill. They nonetheless then participated fully and openly in the discussion, and I'm hoping that they will conclude that their views not only have been respected, but incorporated into the bill. At the same time, the First Amendment also indicates that you cannot impose your religious beliefs on the state, i.e. the general population. So this is not a contradiction, in my view. As someone who's sworn to uphold the Constitution of the United States through five decades now, this is my fifth decade in public service, I do not see the First Amendment as being contradictory. I see it as paradoxical, and I think that's part of the human condition. I think Dean Soffer at the University has indicated that there are parallel tracks that can be seen, not in working in the opposite direction, but in complementing the human condition, if you will. We don't want, we're trying to keep from imposing one set of views on each other that would end up with conflict and confrontation, and we think that this bill achieves that delicate balance that respects the First Amendment.
Governor, do you have the votes in the House for this legislation?
I certainly hope so, but as I say, I've been around a long time, and that which was seen to be certain sometimes works in another direction. But yes, I think, the reason I think that it will pass is for the reason I cited almost at the very beginning. This is now the 20th year, 20th year, not 20th day, 20th month. This is now the 20th year of discussion that has taken place on the issue and associated issues with it. And what I believe is, is that those who conclude that this bill is a good-faith representation, a culmination, if you will, of that long discussion, will be able to vote aye or nay, depending on their ultimate decision about the bill. And in that context, I feel very, very strongly that the votes are there to pass this, because it's time for marriage equity to take place, and it's also time to recognize that it can take place without violating the religious principles of anybody in this state, and their ability to act on their religious beliefs in good faith. That combination, I think, will result in a positive vote in the Legislature, and I think that's why the session will move expeditiously and straightforwardly, because I think everybody will conclude, there's not much to maneuver or work around in terms of this bill. This is a culmination. It's not a beginning.
How long do you expect the session to last?
I expect it, I'm hoping that as a result of what I've just indicated, that everybody's concluded that this is, that this bill protects everybody's interest, that it will take place in regular order, and whatever that time schedule is, I believe it will, it will take place. I presume it'll be four or five days, something of that nature.
Governor, same-sex marriage opponents have raised the specter of other types of marriages being codified if this becomes the law of the land, the law of the land, vis-à-vis marriages that involve more than one person. What are your thoughts on that?
No, I don't think that that's, I don't, not only do I not think that's an issue, but to the degree it is, it'll have to be litigated. So we're, each of these, if there's, we tried to put together a bill that maximizes the capacity for mischief not to occur. If there are individuals or groups who want to try and figure out ways to marginalize or run around the issue, this is a free country, and I suppose they can do it. But this bill is put forward in good faith with respect for the people who are commenting and acting on it in good faith. If someone has another agenda, I presume they can come before the proper judicial authorities or legislative authorities and make their case, but they'll have to do that on their own. We're not aiding and abetting anything like that.
Governor Weiss is now being called marriage equity instead of marriage equality?
Because that's what I choose to call it, and I choose to call it that for, I think, good and sufficient reasons. I have said this right from the very beginning. Now, the title of the bill is "Relating to Marriage," because that title enables us, from a legal standpoint, and you guys stop me if I'm not stating this in vernacular terms the correct way. My understanding, my clear understanding from the legal advice that I get, that relating to marriage is the best possible title to incorporate what it is we want to accomplish here legally. But in terms of its effect, my view is that this is a question of equity. I believe I've said that, I don't know how many hundreds or thousands of times now, over the years, that in a democracy, particularly in one that, one that has our constitutional framework, equity, that is fair treatment for everyone, is a singular hallmark of it. And when it comes to just the question, for example, if you'll allow me, just since last June, the U.S. Supreme Court decision in the Federal Defense of Marriage Act, the IRS and the Treasury Department have ruled that same-sex couples legally married in jurisdictions recognizing their marriages will be treated as married for federal tax purposes. The U.S. Veterans Department has announced that these married couples will be eligible for veterans' benefits. The Pentagon announced that married same-sex couples will be eligible for the same health care, housing, and separation benefits. In other words, there are practical considerations with respect to the relations that people have with one another, over and above the actual fact of marriage, that are crucial to them being able to carry on their secular lives, their everyday relationships. And so that's what equity is. Equity means we're treating everybody fairly, and that we're making certain that they have every opportunity to take advantage of such legal recourse as everybody else has.
How does this bill affect those already in civil unions? Or do you think people will take an abet to the civil union as well?
The civil unions stay in effect. One can choose civil union, or one can choose, if this bill passes, to proceed to marriage. The history, I guess it's, or the evidence where civil union laws and marriage laws exist in other nations, in other cultures, in other areas, is that in some instances, there are more civil unions than there are marriages. But those who choose a civil union and will do so, and those who, if this bill passes, those who choose marriage will do so.
Okay, do you expect a lot of effort? Go ahead.
Do you expect the same-sex marriage, if it passes, that you feel you have the votes to pass, will change the Department of Education and how they instruct students on relationships and those types of things?
No, the Department of Education will do no differently than it has ever done. I was an assistant to the Superintendent of Education back when the question of the phenomenon of AIDS came into the forefront. What the Department of Education will do is reflect what our laws say, what our contemporary world is all about, and as it always has. When there was slavery, it reflected one thing. When there wasn't slavery, it reflected another. When women could not vote, there was one approach in terms of both history and current events. When women could vote, as you know, it all changed. And so, civil rights, for those of us that helped participate in the modern, contemporary advent of civil rights legislation, everything changed when the civil rights laws passed in the 1960s. So what will happen is the Department of Education is not in the business of propagandizing. The Department of Education is in the process of educating our children, and those children will, and the context of the materials presented to the children will reflect that.
But Governor, you took extraordinary steps to include this religious exemption.
Is this the Judiciary Chairman in the Senate who's sitting here, trying to pass himself off as a reporter of some kind? Did I get that wrong?
No, yes, yes, go.
Ooh. Now, for those of you who don't know what that's all about, that's too bad. That's going to be an inside joke for Wayne and myself.
No, but Governor, the religious exemption, that's a necessary step?
Yes.
To get this passed?
Oh, I think so. And it's necessary, from my point of view, regardless, passage or no passage. I'm adamant that we fully respect the First Amendment, and that means that the state cannot impose its, that which could be construed as religious establishment on anybody. I'm rereading my Shakespeare at the moment, and rereading my, the era of the Elizabethans and Henry VIII, and believe me, we have, we don't have to go just in the contemporary world to see what happens when either the state imposes religion or vice versa, to find what terrible consequences can ensue from that. So yes, this bill reflects the religious exemption. I don't think it could pass without it, and I don't think it should pass without it.
Governor, does anyone have a question?
The bill also makes mention of the public accommodations law. As you know, many churches make some extra money by renting out their facilities to the public. Under this bill, that would have to cease if they don't, if they don't want to provide those accommodations to same-sex couples.
No, no. What would apply is exactly what has applied with the Civil Union's law. One of the things that we referenced in, with respect to this bill on marriage and equity, is the very successful legislative endeavor, and there are legislators here today, and I want to extend credit to all of them. The Civil Union's law in Hawaii is very, very well-crafted, particularly with the question of public accommodations. And that's so clear, so clearly written, to be able to differentiate between religious facilities and facilities that are primarily public accommodations in terms of profit-making or running a business, as opposed to that part of an infrastructure that has to do with religious duties and activities. It's so clear, there's not been a single lawsuit, there's not been a single instance of complaint, certainly not, am I correct?
Correct.
Yeah, we don't have any instance whatsoever that the public accommodations law and religious institutions have come into conflict with respect to the enforcement and the legal capacity of the public accommodations law under civil unions to be a successful legislative intent, to meet successfully legislative intent.
Do you think what's happening here in Hawaii, do you think that this is going to have broader implications for the broader conversation about the issue of gay marriage, marriage equality?
I think it'll certainly add to the conversation, because it'll be another instance that will be cited in terms of what I believe is the progress of this discussion coming to, I hope, a successful conclusion, where everybody's interests are accommodated. Not everybody's views, but I'm talking about interests now. Again, in my experience legislatively as government, I've been on the losing side of issues. I've been on the winning side of issues. I've been on the losing side that changed later. I've been on the winning side that changed later. So I think it will add to the conversation for sure, and I believe with its patches that there will certainly be an implication in terms of the economic and social life of the islands. I think it will have a very positive effect in that regard.
Governor, speaking of winning or losing, do you see this helping you politically or hurting you politically in your reelection bid?
Well, after all this time, I don't know, I'm neither in the position of desperately hoping something will help me, or after all this time saying, it really is not something that I think will achieve a conclusion in somebody's part that it benefits me politically one way or another. I'm doing this because it's the right thing to do. It's an issue before us. Let me put it this way. I've spent my entire life politically, whether on a popular side of a, on the side of an issue that's very popular, or on the side of an issue that isn't very popular. What I've tried to do in my political life is figure out what was the fairest thing to do, what was the equitable thing to do, and then to stand for that, and trust that people would conclude, well, I'm not with him on this particular issue, but I know that if I have a particular issue, and he's the only one who believes in me, he won't run away from me. He'll stick with me. So everybody's virtue is their vice. If you're with me on this issue, I guess it bodes well. If you're not, I think in the end you'll conclude, well, not on this one, but possibly on another. For example, making sure that those whose religious beliefs lead them to a different conclusion than I have with respect to marriage equity, that they have been treated fairly and respectfully by me, and that they know I will defend them. As I said, where this bill is concerned, I think it should pass. If it didn't have the religious exemption, then I don't think it should have, because it wouldn't have shown respect for those who have a view different than the one that I have. So I'm confident that whether it advances or not is not the issue. The question is, is whether people believe that they have been treated fairly and respectfully.
Do you have concerns about any challenges or obstacles that you may face between now and October 28th?
I'm not sure what that might entail. You mean opposition, or, well, I expected, yeah, no, no, let me, I think not. In all honesty, this has to do with the logistics of the Legislature and so on, the date. There's no particular magic in this. It has to do with trying to accommodate schedules and, as I say, the logistics of the legislative process. I really don't think that there's much more to be said or done. I suspect that those, again, if this bill has been, if this bill is drafted the way we tried to craft it, those in opposition will vote no, those who are for it will vote yes. I don't think the content of it is going to be altered much one way or the other at this stage, and so I really don't think between now and the actual date that there's going to be much in the way of anything to be learned by anybody, other than possibly restatements of the positions that they have.
The previous draft circulated by your office said ceremonies could begin November 1st, but that seems like that would have to be pushed off. Would they start immediately?
You know, I'm going to let the Attorney General take a shot at that, because that's logistics that are a little bit past me at the moment. And the bill that is being pushed forward right now will have an effective date of November 18. We've been in consultation with the Department of Health, because obviously there's a ramp-up. The Department of Health has to get forms ready, has to get their systems ready, but we've been in consultation with them, and they've been working diligently on this. And so we expect that if a bill, well, the special sessions would be called for October 28th, assuming that it goes well, and that the Governor could sign it upon passage, then it could be implemented.
it could be implemented as early as November 18.
Is that for licenses or ceremonies?
Well, that would, that would be for licenses. Ceremonies are not conducted by the Department of Health.
Oh, right.
Yes, and it would be both, though. I mean, yes.
Thanks.
See how it works? Right. By the way, that opens up something I should have mentioned before, because I think I mentioned in passing before, which is the legal situation we find ourselves in now, a couple, at least two issues on appeal with respect to the issuing, especially with the issuing of licenses. On the one hand, because I concluded as a result of the passage of the Civil Union's bill, that for all intents and purposes, we could no longer defend the proposition that the licenses couldn't be issued. And then, for reasons that have never been clear to me, a lawsuit ensued against the head of the Department of Health and the clerks who were to issue, who were in the business of issuing licenses as public employees. And I think this will help resolve that situation, but I want to make it crystal, I think that will go away with this, with the issuing of the licenses. But I want to make it crystal clear, under no circumstances, as long as I'm Governor, will any public employee have to be in fear or anxious about whether or not he or she will be defended by the State of Hawaii in carrying out their duties. There was absolutely no reason for the clerks, when the license request was made for them, to do anything other than obey the law as they knew it to be, with their best judgment. And I still think it's very unfortunate that there wasn't at least a little bit of consultation ahead of time as to whether that was fair for someone to be sued under those circumstances, or to come under a legal jeopardy, if you will. And I want to assure everybody that, now, some people saw it as a contradiction. How can you be against the enforcement, if you will, of the law, or decline to defend it, and at the same time defend the public employees? Because they're doing their job, and I have been through that myself. I want to indicate to you, in case some of you don't remember, and some of you, I can understand why you wouldn't remember, because I don't think you were born yet necessarily. But when I was, as I mentioned, the assistant to the Superintendent of Education, I came under legal assault. I was sued by someone who subsequently, of course, dropped the case just before the trial was to begin. But it was clearly to harass me and to bring concern to me, because I was sued as an individual, and I had, I had the services of the Attorney General, because the Attorney General concluded that I was acting in my capacity as an officer of the state, as an employee of the state. Had that judgment not been made, I would have had to withstand a lawsuit with my own resources, which were negligible, against people who had a clear political agenda, which was, in this instance, to manifest itself in attacking me. So I want, I am very sensitive to the question of whether public employees are ever in jeopardy with regard to carrying out their duties. Now, I'm not talking about malfeasance and theft and bribery and things of that nature. I'm talking about carrying out your duties. So that hopefully will disappear.
Thank you, Governor.
Okay, thank you, Governor.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Very appreciative.